Twenty-four, and I'd like to call the meeting to order if everyone would join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. I want to give notice that we did have executive session this evening to discuss some legal issues. And we are going to start this meeting off with several presentations. The way I'd like to do it is, at first, I was just going to wait for public participation until after both, but I think that's going to be a little confusing and that these issues really aren't related at all. So I am going to do public participation. These presentations are really informational for you all to know what's going on, both with redistricting, and then we have a crosswalk we'd like to discuss. So after the initial presentations, if you have questions or comments, I'll call up public participation. So our first presentation is on redistricting. Mr. White, you want to start us off?
Thank you, Madam President. I will get us going here once the screens pop up. I just have a couple of slides here that summarize the final results of the redistricting, which, as we understand it, are complete. Mr. Allen is here from the Delaware County Board of Elections to kind of fill in some gaps, but what I thought I would do is just introduce, at a 50,000-foot view, the final redistricting results, as well as the communication plan between now and Election Day. The final map is complete. It's up there. I'm not expecting folks to be able to see their street from there. But this information is all going to be uploaded onto the township's website. We have a voter information-specific page that will be updated by the end of the day tomorrow. Within there are also some additional resources, links to the state voter site that, if you enter your address, it will give you your specific ward, precinct, and voting location information. All of that is live now. We are testing it this afternoon. Quickly, how things resulted in terms of wards and precincts. Still seven wards, for the most part, as the board recommended to the county. It was approved with some minor changes in Ward Two, with a third precinct that was not approved. Couple polling changes that were recommended by the Board of Commissioners that ultimately were not selected or approved by the state and county, and maybe Mr. Allen can discuss that in more detail. I did include, at the bottom here, there's a specific web address that folks will get access to. Again, I'm not expecting during tonight's presentation to get these details, but we can even give it a shot live here and see what happens. So this is the information where you can enter your county, city, street name, house number, and it'll return back to you exactly where your polling location is at. And again, this is the information we are testing this afternoon, and for the folks that we had enter, it all came back correctly. So this is up right now. Just a quick comparison over the polling locations as they were versus what exists now. The items that are highlighted in blue are the ones that had changes. The third precinct in Ward Two is no longer there, so precinct, or Ward Two now just has the two precincts. And there is a third precinct added to the seventh ward. And I apologize, I made some changes to this. They don't appear that they came through, but the Villanova Performing Arts Center should be the Mullen Center for Performing Arts. That's Ward Two, Precinct Two, and Ward Seven, Precinct Three will both be voting there. And then the two precincts in Ward Six will both be voting at the Wayne Elementary School. So over the next, what, two months, less than two months, there are specific steps that will be taken both by the county, and then the township will coordinate with the county in most of these items to help cross-promote and emphasize different announcements and notifications. The county's website will be updated with the same tool that I just showed a moment ago for folks to enter their information and get that back. The county is planning on doing three mailers that will go to all of their addresses in Radnor. And all of the polling locations, there's a physical posting, including this building, which is no longer a polling location. There's a physical posting in each of those letting them know that the change took place. Complementing those announcements and mailers, the township intends to do a, well, as I mentioned, our website will be updated, the voting information page with the maps, the voting locations, as well as the links, the link that I just showed. We will also put together an Around Town Thursday, which those of you on Instagram and LinkedIn usually see our Public Information Officer putting little one-minute nuggets out about things that are going on in the township. So this Thursday will be dedicated to the redistricting and where folks can go to find the information associated with the redistricting. We will also be putting out a news feed, which is an electronic communication. We have over 10,000 subscribers, so that'll hit those inboxes. That will go out later this month, and then we will also do that closer to the election time. And then an additional social media post. We'll plan on coordinating those with when the county does the mailers as a keep-your-eye-out-for, and we'll include images of what the mailer looks like, why it's being mailed. So, you know, folks getting it are one extra resource to know that what they're receiving is something important and to please take a look at it. And then, right before the election, doing a little bit more of an in-depth social media and electronic communication about the polling locations that changed. And we will have that in early November. So that's the plan. And again, our Public Information Officer, Molly Gallagher, is in touch and working with Mr. Allen, which is a great segue to introduce Mr. Jim Allen, the Director of Election Operations from Delaware County.
Thank you, Mr. White. Madam President and members of the Commissioners, Board of Commissioners, thank you for your work on this map in trying to craft more compact districts than were there previously, as well as to try to help our voters across the board have polling places closer to their homes, especially, and that includes Villanova University. So your work is to be lauded. I want to say that Mr. White and Peggy Hagan have been, in particular, have been invaluable through this process. So you did all this heavy lifting back in 2022, and you're probably wondering, why is it now? So every decade, the Township Charter calls for the realignment of the districts to make sure that they're still balanced based on any population changes after the census. So the 2021 census data came out. Then you went to work in 2022. We got the new map. We received the new map in December and January of 2022, and, I'm sorry, December of 2022 and January of 2023. But at that point, going to court, going to the Department of State, trying to get all that approved ahead of the municipal election would have been impossible. It would have tangled up all the candidate filings. So similar to what happened in 2013, when the redistricting occurred, it was implemented in the fall of 2014 then, and your remap of 2022 is going to be implemented in this election. We couldn't do it in the primary earlier this year, earlier also, because we would have been having people circulate petitions for Republican Committeeman and Committee Woman based on the old precincts and then running in the new precincts, possibly running against each other. So this is the first clean opportunity that we have to implement this. So as soon as the primary was over, we filed in court. It took a couple of months to get that court date. We got a court date in July, late July, and then we presented it to the Department of State. It took another month till the end of August to get their feedback. We determined, before we went to court, that we needed to adjust one ward where it, I think, the census data incorrectly suggested there were 1,000 people. There were more like 35 people, 40 people, in a certain part of the Villanova campus. That relates to how their mail is all processed through one building. And so then, in the process of review by the Department of State, they determined that we needed to realign, not a ward, but the border between two precincts, so that Cardinal O'Hara, I'm sorry, Archbishop Carroll High School is included with, mixing up my Delco Religious Schools. Archbishop Carroll is in the same precinct as the neighboring Villanova property. It didn't affect any of the population at all, although there was once residential housing at the Archbishop Carroll Campus. It hasn't been used for that purpose for decades. So if Ian can pull up on the screen, the one change that, so we had to make that slight change. It took a good month for the Department of State to get back to us with that. We also went back to one of the first conclusions that this Board of Commissioners made, as far as in Sixth Ward, placing both the first precinct and the second precinct at Wayne Elementary. The paperwork that came over to us had Wayne Elementary as the initial choice for Six Two, but then it was handwritten in that we should be going to the Civic Association. This came up as a question during the hearing, whether or not Wayne Elementary was more suited in terms of parking, in terms of accessibility. We vowed during the hearing to look into that. We presented it to our polling place evaluation staff with no agenda, just give it a head-to-head comparison, and they came back with the conclusion that it's clearly a more accessible site, more parking, more well-lit at Wayne Elementary. I know there were some people who felt strongly about it being at the Civic Association, but we're looking at clearly the sheer physical aspects of the facility, and it also provides a more reliable site for us because statutorily we can require any public school to serve as a polling place, period, end of story. So that brings us up to today. We also have, as Mr. White referenced, a mailing that will be going out to every registered voter in Radnor Township, and we'll be doing it three times. So we would normally do this once for only the people who are affected by a change, but we're going to be doing this all for every single Radnor Township voter, whether they were changed or not. So this is the front side of it, announcing that this is an important notice with the official election mail logo prescribed by the Postal Service. Then on the backside, it'll have the voter's name, address, and then what their, obviously, this will vary depending on the mailing, what their polling place is. Technically, we finished updating all the voters last week to their new precincts, or every block zone of addresses to the new precincts, and we updated the corresponding polling places for the precincts. So if anybody goes tonight to vote.paa.gov/polls, it may not actually reflect the final until tomorrow morning. I just want to be clear. So the final list of polling places were uploaded by our voter registration staff, but they did a great job of, once we got the decision from the Department of State, of making sure that all 22,000-plus of those records were changed, because we also have to change even canceled records. So it's a very complex process. So with that, I'll take any questions.
I have a question. So to the issue of the polling place in Six, we did have incredibly generous offer, and a lot of, and several of the Commissioners very interested in having the polling place at the Civic Association. Can you walk us through what you mentioned? You called them your polling analysts, or your polling place team that makes those decisions. Can you just let us know a little bit about what that analysis was, what it looks like?
So their primary function, especially when we're trying to find a replacement polling place, is to assess what alternatives are in that neighborhood and which ones will meet ADA compliance. The Civic Association building, from the street at least, is not 100% accessible. There's a curb and a little step on the walkway from the curb to that. Then it is sort of accessible through an apron off to the side, or a street off to the side. But as far as the building itself, parking right in front of the building, an apron on a neighboring driveway, if it's blocked by one car, that could present a problem. It also came down to the size of the street. It came down to the parking. It came down to the lighting at night, and it's just the size of the building. An elementary school is a much more recognizable community gathering point, and those are the considerations that were weighed.
And is there, you know, we only do this redistricting supposed to be every 10 years, but polling places change more often. They have in my ward due to, you know, buildings not being available at a certain time. The pandemic, of course, affected where people voted for at least a year. Is there opportunity, if some of those issues that were identified are cured by partnership with the township, to use the park for parking, or having, you know, parking only for voters up front? And, you know, if we were able to, over time, address some of the concerns that the county has about that site, what is the process to, you know, kind of appeal for another opportunity to move it there?
Well, any municipality can request, any 10 voters in a precinct can file a request with us, and we're bound to evaluate it again. So we're not closing the door on anything. We just think at this time, in terms of the size of the potential turnout of this election, and in terms of parking and accessibility, this seems to be the right way to go.
Thank you. Any further?
Yes, yeah.
So voting in the third ward, 3-1, will be at the library?
Yes.
And will it be in the Windsor Room?
I don't know off the top of my head whether it's the Windsor Room. I can get that information too.
So it's usually, just someone who got switched over there one time, me, went to the wrong, went up top, not the bottom. So I just wanted to make sure that that would be clear to people, whether or not I have to send out an email, or that's made clear. And Chief, I guess it's Chief, will we suspend all parking fees for the South Wayne Lot for Election Day?
Yes, Commissioner. Any polling place, regardless of where they've been, if there is paid parking, we waive that, and we usually make sure that if they have a special request for any type of vehicles, such as handicap or whatever, we make accessibility.
Okay. So the whole lot will be for that day? I mean, it's a big day, you know, it's national elections, a big day, so.
You're good to go.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further Commissioner comments? Just so you know, the library has been used as a polling place for the sixth ward for a long time. So they're used to it. Doesn't mean the people coming to vote will be used to it, but at least know that the library's used to having people vote there, so. Any other questions? No? Any public participation on this issue? Step forward. Say your name and at least your street address. You don't have to give the number if you don't want to.
My name is Pamela Jensen. I'm a resident of Radnor Ward One, 407 North Wayne Avenue. And I'm speaking here as a member of the RTCA Board. We're, of course, disappointed in this decision. We've been working on this for a year and a half, and the issues that have arisen from the county have been raised on numerous occasions, and they were raised before this board, before the Board of Commissioners, on January the 23rd of 2023. Despite all of those potential issues being raised and discussed, this board voted six to one to recommend that the RTCA be the polling place for Ward Six, Precinct Two. We are disappointed that the county did not choose to respect that decision of the local elected officials who we think are in the best position to be able to make a determination as to the suitability of a particular place for polling. We did, as a board, speak with Chief Flanagan about the lighting issues. I've spoken with Mr. Allen about other issues. It's not like all of these issues have been ignored. They have been thoroughly researched, evaluated, and until today, not found lacking. So we are disappointed in this result, and I would just like that to be on the record, that we believe the issues were addressed, and this body, the Board of Commissioners, is in the best position to make that determination. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public participation? Mr. Murphy?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Al Murphy, 627 Glen Mary Road. Pretty straightforward question. If a resident arrives at the wrong polling place, one, can they vote? Two, will it count? So that's either to Bill or to?
Mr. Allen.
You got it. That's an excellent question. One of the reasons that we argued strenuously for implementing this now is that this is absolutely the best election for that. If someone is, we now have the electronic poll books. So those have all the records of all the voters from across the county. So if someone arrives at the wrong precinct, it'll print out a ticket saying, "You need to go to Ithet School. You need to go to JCHAI." So there's that. But if someone has to go to work, or they are in the polling place, they are in the wrong polling place, and they get there at 7:59 PM, and they don't have time to go to that correct polling place, this is the one election where a provisional ballot, rather, cast in any Radnor precinct is going to be identical. All the contests, all the candidates will be identical, and every single one of their votes will count, as long as they haven't voted anywhere else. So, yes.
So would they be voting provisionally?
They would. But that ballot, you know, like I said, if they're just voting in the wrong precinct within Radnor Township, and they're registered to vote in Radnor Township, that full ballot should be counted.
Thank you.
Sure.
I also know that there are planned to be some volunteers at the polling stations that no longer will be polling stations here, Radnor Elementary, just to tell people, "You need to go to the high school," or whatever it is.
Yeah, that was just a general question. Normally, would a provisional ballot count? That's the question.
Well, a provisional ballot, it depends on the circumstances. It can full count, partial count, or not count at all. If someone's not registered at all, it won't count. If they're registered and their ballot is identical to the ballot that they should have cast in their own home precinct, it'll count in full. If their ballot is somewhat different, for example, they're in a different state rep district, or a different, you know, ward, and then there's a commissioner race, and they're voting on the different wards ballot, then it'll partially count. It'll count on all of the countywide and township-wide offices, but not, maybe the MDJ, but not perhaps at that very local level.
Thank you. Any further public participation? Seeing none, we thank you very much for coming up to clarify these issues.
Thank you.
Oh, it's the screen. I'm like, it's getting dark over there. All right. Our second presentation tonight will be about the King of Prussia and Glen Mary Road potential crosswalk. I, again, will run this the same way we just did the last one. We'll have a brief presentation, and then we can have some public participation afterwards. Mr. Norsini, I believe you're going to start us off on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
So good evening, everybody. So as Commissioner Myers noted, this is a presentation only on the proposed crosswalks and rectangular rapid flashing beacons for King of Prussia and Glen Mary Road. The goal tonight is to provide everybody with as much information as they can have, for everybody to make informed decisions, and ask questions, and have discussion. So again, no request for a ruling tonight. This is just informational. Little background, this started with the previous Commissioner when some residents approached him regarding the intersection of King of Prussia and Glen Mary. This is a note. King of Prussia Road has an average daily traffic of 12,800 vehicles, so just want to get that out there. Their concern was not only for students who use the crosswalk, but for residents that want to access Wayne. Since that time, additional residents have contacted the township with the same concerns, as they felt the existing flashing lights were inadequate. The project is funded by a 2019 bond issue, if it moves forward. I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that. So what was designed was crosswalks, ADA ramps, along with rectangular rapid flashing beacons. You're going to hear me trip over that several times throughout the night. And we did get a PennDOT permit for this work. The biggest issue here is that the new design places the ADA ramp, the crosswalks, and the RRFP not at where it is at the church, but at 698 Glen Mary. I will tell everybody that the township's goal for the project was to provide a safer route to the Radnor Elementary School and improve walkability. And if you followed our comp plan whatsoever, walkability has come up dozens of times. So let's look at our existing conditions. This is the church. This is the school. So right now, there's a Continental Crosswalk, that's what we call that, across King of Prussia Road. If you're approaching from Upper Gulf, this is what you see, there are flashing signals on top of a mast arm and a sign. If you're approaching from the bridge, you will see these two flashing signals. So that's what we have today. I know this is a little busy. It will get better, believe me. So again, here's the church. Here's the property on Glen Mary. Over here is the school. The green outlines the new work, the proposed work, sidewalks. This is where the beacon would go. Similarly, the same thing on the school district side. But let's go to the next slide. This is a little easier, looking at the overlay. So we have the church here, 698 Glen Mary, the school district. So we've already obtained an easement from the church three years ago for a temporary construction easement to do our work there. That would be a little bit of sidewalk work, and also an ADA ramp. It would cross over Glen Mary, proposed. This red is new sidewalk, as well as a five-by-five pad for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. I want to point out this green line. This would be a temporary construction easement we would need. What that would allow us to do is actually construct this work. Once it's done, that easement goes away. We would be left with a permanent easement for the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. It's a five-by-five pad. So it's not just for the physical pad. It's for us to own, operate, and maintain the signal. You would then cross over King of Prussia to the school district. Again, there's an RRFP. A new sidewalk would take you to the driveway, and you would move forward into the school. So that's what's proposed. What is this RRFP that we talk about? Let's see. Okay, that's how it works. It does flash, and it flashes on both sides. So when that's up and operating, vehicles see it from both sides of the street. So you would go up, and there's going to be a little pole, and you press the button, and it flashes. Couple of notes from the U.S. Department of Transportation, the Federal Highway Administration. They put forth that RRFPs reduce crashes by 47% and can increase motorist yielding rate up to 98%. Yielding rate is when they actually stop for people in the crosswalks. Couple caveats, varies by speed limit, number of lanes, times a day. So why was 698 Glen Mary chosen? We're going to talk about that. So had better site distance than being over at the church. There is an existing sidewalk that goes in front of a few houses, you can see here, and when PennDOT saw the site distance information, they thought this was the better location. This is the resident's property as you're coming from Upper Gulf. So actually, this portion of sidewalk and this ADA ramp would be proposed to be replaced. It would follow around, and right in here is where the RRFP would go. There's a blow-up of that. So remember, there was a temporary construction easement in here. There's no proposal to remove any trees. It would just allow us to get the sidewalk installed. The permanent easement would be a five-by-five, what we call traffic signal easement. Alternatives, let's talk about a few different routes we could go. The first one would be Bellrose Lane to the pedestrian bridge over Mattson-Ford Road. So for all So, for all these, I've chosen Glen Mary and Bellrose as a starting point, because when I've observed, I see folks coming down from there and other streets. So, that'll be our starting point. So, you would traverse, you would come up Bellrose Lane. I have a note here, there are no sidewalks on Bellrose Lane until you get up here, and actually, it's on the wrong side of the street. So, you would come up here, walk over here, cross over, walk the path in the park, and go into the school district over our pedestrian bridge over Matson Ford Road. Couple of things, there is no crosswalk here, so we would have to install one, perhaps a similar project to what we're talking about now with the RRFPs. That's about half a mile. Okay, number two, Bellrose Lane to King of Prussia Road to the pedestrian bridge. Why King of Prussia? Because we have an actual crosswalk there. So, again, you'll come up Bellrose. We do have sidewalk at this point. The red is the sidewalk. Would take you to what is an existing crosswalk. Again, you come over into the park, come up and around, head into the school district property. Now, this one is not an enhanced crosswalk either, it's just your standard lines and signs. We can look at this one. This is using the signal at Matson Ford and King of Prussia. So, again, our starting point is down here at Bellrose and Glen Mary. It's about 700 feet up to King of Prussia Road. This is that existing sidewalk I showed you in the previous slide on the residence property. You would come down along King of Prussia Road. We have a signal here, we have a crosswalk. Come across there, cross over Matson Ford, onto the school district property. One item is, there is no connection to the school district path, so that would have to be extended through those trees. More importantly, if we were going to come down here, there is no sidewalk, and that would have to be installed along King of Prussia Road. There's no way out of that. And also, if you can see, these trees, which are on the residence property, would all be removed for the installation of that sidewalk, because they're right up against the street. So, it's an onerous thought there. Number four, keep it at the church. So, again, when our surveyors were out there through Gilmore Associates, it showed that the site distance was better. This is the limited disturbance here to the church. So, I drew a line over the walls that would have to be removed. So, here's, if you look at it here, and here. So, the church was established in 1880. I don't know if the walls are from 1880, but they've been there for a while. So, they would lose the walls from here and about here. Now, again, we have the temporary construction easement we need to perform the proposed project from the church already. Alternative five, so same starting point, Glen Mary and Bellrose. We go up Bellrose till we hit King of Prussia, come over to the signalized intersection with the crosswalk, cross over Matson Ford, into the school district property. Again, we'd have to create a path. There is an asphalt sidewalk, if you will, but that would not be appropriate for what we would do. If this was ever chosen, there'd be an ADA ramp here, we'd put in new sidewalks, and we'd do some enhancements. So, again, what we're trying to show here tonight is what was proposed, what we have a permit to do, and some alternatives that everybody can look at. And we're not asking in any means for approval or moving forward, is to give the board and whatever residents are here, an opportunity to take in this information, ask questions, and then we move from there. So, we're at the questions part now.
Thank you very much. That was really concise and well done. Any Commissioner questions? I have one. So, we're talking about the whatever letters you use for the rapid flashing beacon. Is there a sound component to that?
There is, Commissioner. So, PennDOT, unfortunately, I was able to get the video, but the sound did not come through. There is a beeping sound that goes with that. That's required. PennDOT's making everybody put that module in when they do these. In talking to our traffic consultant, we should be able to turn the volume down so that you, as a pedestrian, would hear it. But hopefully, if this, again, if this went through, the residents would not hear that in their house.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner questions?
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, on the flash, and you said that you could hit a button, and then it would make it flash. And for some reason, I've seen similar, and the light's on, and there's nobody around.
So, there is, there is motion activated. So, you can go motion activated, push button, or both. So, the motion activated is as you approach and as you cross by that button, if you don't press it, it will go on. So, this picture is the one on South Itham, Villanova South Campus, that was put in as part of the housing project. That is a push button. I have not seen that on without kids. Now, the only thing is, if you push it, it goes on for a predetermined time. So, if you walk across there and you're gone, it's still going to go for a few seconds.
Okay. Thanks.
I have a few more.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I've seen these, you know, they're very effective at night. I don't know how effective they are in daylight. Is there, do people notice them in the day?
That's why I took this picture in the day. They are noticeable. I've been down at Villanova when they put this in, and recently to take that. So, yes, you can see them during the day. Obviously, at night, the contrast is great, but they are noticeable.
Is King of Prussia Road a state road?
It is.
Matson Ford?
That's ours. No, I'm sorry, that's state too.
That's a state road. So, we can't slow down the...
So, with an average daily traffic of 12,800 cars, PennDOT's not going to allow traffic calming on a road like that.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, I mean, basically, the idea is that...
And I'm not speaking for them, that's just from my experience.
The idea of, this is for crossing basically into Radnor Elementary School, so people feel safe.
Conceivably, we could look at, and I don't know if they would approve it, so conceivably, maybe the lanes could be narrowed a little bit with the sidewalk sticking out, but I don't know, because of the speed limit and the number of cars. This, they approved. That would be a whole nother process, and I can't say that it would or wouldn't happen. But it wouldn't be to reduce the speed limit, it would be to narrow the lanes so you slow down on your own.
But is there already, because I don't recall, because it's near Radnor Elementary, is there already a 15 miles per hour during school?
No, because, so you only have a school zone when you have an entrance to the school.
On the road?
On the road. So, there's, this does not, as far as I know, this does not qualify. So, alls we have is the mast arm mounted, flashing lights and a sign, and the pedestal mounted. But there's no school zone on King of Prussia for that reason.
I mean, it just seems inherently dangerous to me, and trying, it's almost, we're luring people to use it, but sort of not a good idea.
So, they are using the existing one, right? They're using that now. This is safer.
Okay. Is there any thought of using a crossing guard during school?
I have not broached that with the school.
Is that us, or is that the school district that decides that?
I would talk to Chief Flanagan in the school district about that. But again, you're not in a school zone. But now, our crossing guards are in school zone, so...
Okay, thank you.
Steve, can you go back to the first option and the drawing where you've created the sidewalk extending right there? So, the neighbor, the neighbors approved this?
No. The church provided a temporary easement. This neighbor has not. And really, that's why we're here tonight, is to look at all options.
So, where do the conversations stand with this neighbor?
This neighbor, and I believe he is here, because I spoke to him when I spoke to Mr. Murphy, he doesn't, would prefer this not be on his property.
Okay.
I don't want to speak for him, but that, of that, I'm sure.
So, but if we ended up, if we end up with this option, who's responsible for the sidewalk? So, if it snows, it's icy?
As with all our sidewalk projects, and we've done six or seven pedestrian safety projects, that always goes back to the resident. Except for the five-by-five pad for the beacon, that's ours. But no, the sidewalk, just like this sidewalk here is the residence. And if you notice down here, there's a net increase of four sidewalk blocks. Temporary construction easements, 339 square feet, and the RRFP is a 25-square-foot easement.
Yeah, obviously, this is the best option. Like, if, so, but if we don't go with option one, like, what, what's the next best option in your mind?
Well, you know, these are all options that can be used, right? But then, we just have to look at, where do we think the folks are going to go?
Well, you're, I mean, this option right here, the goal is to get these kids to Radnor Elementary. This is quite a hike.
But I have to show them, right? We have to say, we've looked at things, and yes, it's a more circuitous route, as is this one, as is this one. I mean, this one has the traffic signal, but I dare say, the impact of the residence property would be considerably worse in that these, you know, very nice arbividee have grown up to give him protection, and they'd be gone. Now, we could always try to plant something else, but, yeah, they're huge. So, the resident is here.
Do we have another, do you have an example in the township where you've done similar projects and used a neighbor's property where they didn't originally have the sidewalk and how it turned out?
Sure. North Wayne Avenue from Eagle to the township line, that's all sidewalk that's now owned and operated by the, I use our term. That is now owned and maintained by the homeowners. We did some additional sidewalk work on West Wayne as part of the existing. That's all the homeowners.
Was South Devon and Arbordale, did you guys extend sidewalk there?
I don't believe so. But we have done, I mean, and that is one of the concerns of the residents, but for those that, I'm sorry, when I first started here in 2011, St. David's to Eastern, right? There's like, I don't know, maybe 1,500 feet of sidewalk from basically the train station on down to the Eastern property. Again, we installed it, and the residents take it over.
Okay.
That is standard for the township.
All right. Thanks, Steve. Appreciate the presentation.
Could you go back? I'm sorry, Steve, could you go back to the picture you had before? The Arbor, but, yeah.
So, I'm not, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is the one.
Yeah.
So, it looks like...
This doesn't do them justice. They're really big. I mean, I took the picture recently, but you don't see how large they are.
So, it looks to me, well, King of, that's King of Prussia and Glen Mary, is it?
This is Glen Mary, this is King of Prussia.
That if you're, people crossing, it's, it looks like, with the arbividee, like, it looks like a blind spot. Am I wrong?
So, when our folks surveyed it a couple of years ago, this was the better site, this met the site distance requirements. Now, if things have changed in the past couple of years, there are requirements for any homeowner to keep their site distance open.
So, these would have to come down?
No. Only if that, these would only come down in this scenario. There's no anticipation of removal of any trees if the project went through as proposed. They would only come down if we had to run a sidewalk down King of Prussia to Matson Ford. And this is just, I mean, there's no engineering on this alternative. This is me showing the board and the residents different paths to take.
Thank you. Any other Commissioner comments or questions? Seeing none, I'd like to invite the public to speak to this issue, if they'd like to. Any, the homeowner, neighbors, anyone from Radnor. Mr. Norsini, you got something?
I'm just getting out of here as soon as I can, as soon as I can clear this for the next, there we go.
Hi, Commissioners. Brian, if you wanted to come up as well. My name's Megan Collins, and this is my husband, Brian Collins. We are the owners of 698 Glen Mary Road. Just to start, the way we came upon hearing about this plan is that we were delivered an easement, a contract in the mail, and we were asked to sign it with zero background for what, for any of this. So, that, that's, I don't feel that this has been fairly, the information has been fairly provided to us, and we've really had to search for it. We had to hire an attorney and spend money to try to research what is happening here. I would like to start and say, I do not feel that the alternative was fairly presented to you as the alternative that we did present, which we do think is the safest based on the sight lines, and the best alternative plan is to start at Bellrose. And they talked about there are minimal sidewalks going to Bellrose. There are no sidewalks, with the exception of the one in front of our house and our neighbor's house on Glen Mary. So, net-net, you're equal. Neither have sidewalks. Bellrose is not a cut-through street the way Glen Mary is. And it provides you, it takes you directly to an existing RRFD crosswalk, and then it takes you to a, a path through Radnor Memorial Park and a safe skywalk that drops you right in front of the school. What also is not fairly presented just now is that this crosswalk next door doesn't take you in front of the school. You still, when we're talking about a distance for the neighbors to have to walk their kids to school, they still have to take an entire path around the school to get to the front of the school. So, distance-wise, we're not talking about any more of a lift, much more of a lift than what they're proposing here. It also, this alternative avoids the taking of someone's property. If you could see how small that front portion is, we have a circle driveway. Installing this will not only draw people to our house, it will increase our liability. We can't get out of our sight, we will have no line of sight to exit our own driveway safely, with kids and a big RRFD, whatever this is called, in our front yard. Not to mention, we both work from home. I work in that little area that's less than 10 feet from where they're proposing to put this. It is going to chirp all day. We have two dogs that sit in the driveway. We are going to have kids now coming onto our property and dog walkers, because let's start, this was not intended or presented as only being for the school kids to walk to school. This is for the walkability of Wayne. We are all for that. And we walk with our dogs and our kids all the time in Wayne, and we take Bellrose, or we use the existing one that is currently not at the church. So, there are a number of other options that do not require the taking of our property. This is going to significantly impact our value of our property. Nobody wants a chirping, talking crosswalk...
Structure.
...structure on their property. We barely have much, we have a postage stamp of property, and what they're saying is only five foot, no, it is, it's a very big taking. Not to mention, the existing tree that's there, in order to put this big structure up, no doubt, they are going to have to take limbs from the existing tree, and we just paid for additional landscape to create more privacy, and they will have to take that away and put up some more trees, which is going to take years again to give us some privacy. So, there are options available, and I am very disappointed that they're not entertaining those in light of the significant taking that, of property that they're taking of ours and our use and enjoyment of the property. If you asked anyone, they would not want this on their property. And we have tried to go back and forth with the township and Attorney Rice, talking about these alternatives, and we, they keep saying that this is, the alternatives are not, are not palatable, because, they said it's not feasible. It's not feasible because there are no sidewalks between Glen Mary and Bellrose on either side. And there are no, I mean, there are no sidewalk, we don't have sidewalks in that neighborhood. So, it's just really leaning towards what they want. I also need to ask, who's asking for this? Because in our survey of our residents in our neighborhood with whom we're close, we've heard about one neighbor who wants this. And net-net, if there's one neighbor who wants this, and there's an equally alternative option to going Bellrose instead of infringing on our property to get there, to me, it's a no-brainer, right? It's, it's very disappointing. I also understand that when this school was put up, there was a restriction on walking to the school, because the very, the very person who bestowed that land to the township knew that this was not a walkable area through King of Prussia Road. It's not safe. And to your point was spot-on, you're luring kids to come to this area and cross. Get a crossing guard. You have so many more options than putting this flashing light up. If the one that's there isn't working, and they think that this next one is going to do it, how? Please show me how. Brian, would you like to add anything?
I think you've got it covered.
Thank you. Any, I just want to remind you that we're not here to make a decision about this tonight. This is really just a discussion about the issue. Is there any further public participation on this? Mr. Murphy?
Thank you again, Madam Chair and the Board. The... Thank you again, Madam Chair and the board. I learned about this on Friday. Steve gave me a call and said, "Let's meet at the church, try to get a perspective." That as a parishioner, I was on the vestry for a number of years just to see what the church would think. Looking at it, it would be a lot of expense to take down the wall. I mean, it's, it would probably be a suboptimal option. That's not my major concern. The interesting thing to me is that life always comes full circle. And I'm old enough and I've lived in my house for over 40 years that we were battling the school district for that location, going back into the late, you know, 2018, 19, et cetera. And we pointed out that it is probably one of the worst locations in the township to locate an elementary school. Very busy road, King of Prussia, very busy road, Matsonford Road. And at the time Superintendent DeFominis was keep holding up a directory and he said, "This is what we want to do." They had some other options to make it a walking school, they just chose not to do that. The township, as some residents may remember, had to sacrifice a bunch of land. The developer and owner of the, of the Radnor Corporate Center had to give up some, some things in order to make this work. I mean, really, it was a time bomb that's now sitting in your lap where you're trying to solve a problem that shouldn't need to be solved. Glen Mary Road as a, as a access point to these crosswalks is really suboptimal itself. There are no sidewalks, it's a very old community, can't put sidewalks on there. Although Commissioner Spangler tried for a number of years to try to get sidewalks there. There are 100-year-old trees all up and down it. It's just not a good spot. And quite frankly, there are very few walkers. There are lots of dogs and residents walking around our, our area, Houston Road, et cetera, but they're not going to the school. And I beg to differ, there aren't residents coming the other way just to get to Wayne. That's just, just not happening. So, I think that you're being asked to try to solve a problem that the school district dumped in your lap. They knew that it wasn't a walking school. The reality is, it's not a walking school. You can't make it what, what you would like it to be. It's just not going to work. They could probably take that existing crosswalk and do some improvements. It's a little bit, I mean, cars are flying along King of Prussia Road going both ways. You don't know it's a school until you get there. I mean, there are probably some things that you can do to maybe tidy that up a little bit, but there are very few people that do it. It's a, it's a high-risk venture. The crosswalk situation that they put at the, at the movie theater in Bryn Mawr, which is one where you hit the, hit the button, it is unbelievably dangerous just to go four lanes to cross there. So, there's really no good solution for this. The best answer is, tell the residents not to walk, tell them to find another way to get there. It's just not safe.
Thank you. Any further public participation?
Members of the board, thank you for allowing me to comment. My name is Matt Maeve. I live at 672 Glen Mary Road. I just want to start out by saying that I deeply sympathize with the Collinses, who I had the opportunity to meet a few months ago when I went over to just find out, you know, what their views were on, on the crosswalk because I am a concerned resident who deeply wants some solution to fix this problem. My wife, Megan, and I are the parents of five children, ages one to nine, the oldest two of whom are students at Radnor Elementary School. We live about 500 feet from the RAS gate. I can see the school from my house. From my yard, I can hear the class bell ring and the laughs of students playing at recess. I live closer to RAS than some people in Radnor walk from the front of their properties to the back. And we could walk our kids to school in under 10 minutes, but we don't. They take the bus. Because crossing KOP to Radnor Elementary School is a lethal proposition. I didn't have all of the numbers that you have that were presented tonight, the ones showing traffic increase along KOP Road in recent years, but anecdotally, I can see it, I can hear it. Motorcycles, emergency vehicles, construction equipment. King of Prussia Road was once described to me by a longtime resident as a quiet country road. Well, it's not that anymore. It's become busy and dangerous and not responding to this change with a proper and safe street crossing to RAS is, in my opinion, reckless and it's going to get somebody killed, probably a child. The pedestrian crossing at KOP and Glen Mary represents for my family a perilous, seemingly impenetrable boundary to traverse. As far as my kids are concerned, it might as well be the Schuylkill. On the infrequent occasions when we do cross there, we do so with the utmost care, caution, and vigilance. Half the time, we're running together across the road lest an oncoming car, even a faraway one, is traveling toward us faster than we are able to perceive it. When we make it safely across to the school side, we feel relief we made it without incident. And I don't blame drivers, by the way. I myself have driven past this crossing thousands of times, sometimes missing pedestrians waiting to cross. To a motorist, people waiting to cross are almost impossible to see, let alone slow down and stop for. Everyone in our neighborhood has had close calls at this crossing. I can't count the number of times my wife, pushing a stroller, has had a close encounter with a speeding car whose driver, whose driver simply could not see her. Someone is surely going to perish there and I believe it's only a matter of time. What bothers me almost as much as the dangerous crossing presents is the absurd irony of all of this. My kids enjoy the freedom of our beautiful neighborhood. They ride their bikes all summer long in the parking lot of St. Martin's Episcopal Church or to the nearby homes of their friends who live, like us, among the tranquil streets of St. David's. Yet, crossing that fearful intersection at KOP Road to their school is daunting. The crossing is the talk of our neighborhood, honestly, and it has been for a long time. I think it's a shame and it's wrong and it's an arrangement completely unbecoming of the safe, bucolic, idyllic Radnor we all deign to tout to others. I and many others in our neighborhood long for action to be taken to resolve this. I realize that these things are complicated, that there are many stakeholders in our proposed redesign. The school, the church, homeowners, taxpayers, and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, which governs the road. But I think this boils down to the basics. The lives of our children in our neighborhood, who are separated by that fearsome road from their school for fear of their lives, transcend all other interests. And I implore you to help us figure out how to solve this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Hi. My name's Clark Pierce. I live on Hilaire Road, 530 Hilaire Road. I walk from Hilaire to Glen Mary across KOP just about every morning with my dog, sometimes in the dark. It's a very dangerous road to cross, as Matt highlighted. I don't need to say anymore of that, but I just wanted to point out that people do cross that road that don't have children and it's still busy and it's still dangerous. I think that putting something like this in place would be good. I would highly encourage you not to put it down Belrose because there are no crosswalks, or sorry, there are no sidewalks there. It's also very narrow at a turn right by the Belrose Restaurant and it, it's a very dangerous place for pedestrians because there's nowhere to go. So, I would highly encourage that option to be, at least everyone should walk it at dawn or at dusk and see what it's like even in the sunlight. It's a tough turn. So, just want to make you aware of that. I don't think Belrose is a good option. Any of those routes that take you over to the path, to the walking bridge, which I agree is better, it's still not safe. Belrose is a tough one. So, I think that is the best spot. The problem is, is drivers come up from upper gulf, their eye line is over the horizon as the road rises. They're trying to see if they're going to make that light or not. They're not paying attention to pedestrians on either side. So, they are not tuned into that. And the only way to get them is if you step into the crosswalk. You literally, and where the church is and where that crosswalk is, it's very dangerous. There's no space. So, it's a tough one and it's a really tough one for our neighbors on Glen Mary and I get it, but it's very dangerous. And I hate to agree with Matt that something bad's going to happen there. So, just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your safety concerns.
I have to do a follow-up here. If you hear, everybody is saying, "It is so dangerous. It's so dangerous to cross there."
You've used your time if your husband wants to come in.
Oh, okay. But...
It's danger, it's dangerous to cross there. We all know that. There are sidewalks in place where, there are sidewalks in place where we're being told there are not sidewalks in place. Happy to share our, our slides. I don't have them online, but the other thing is, you know, putting, putting any sort of sidewalk along King of Prussia is, is not, not the solution as well. We lose the trees. It's not a safe place to walk. I don't know any family, whether or not there's a child, a bike, an adult, a dog that's want to walk around, walk along King of Prussia Road. So, I just want to make sure that that's highlighted as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one minute, we have someone else.
Hi. Hi. My name is Lindsay Borse and I live on Montgomery Lane. I have three children, a one-and-a-half-year-old, a four-year-old, and a six-year-old who just started first grade at Radnor Elementary. And when we moved into our house two years ago, we were so excited about the proximity to his school, especially being a kindergartner. I will admit, when I found out there was a crosswalk there, it gave me a bit of a false sense of security. The crosswalk leads you to a very nice path that takes you around the elementary school and there's two ways to enter the school from there. So, on nice days, I love to walk to pick my son up with my two daughters and I push the double stroller. And every time I get to the intersection of Glen Mary and King of Prussia, I take a huge breath and wait for traffic to lull down because no one has ever stopped for me there. And I sprint across to them and like say the Hail Mary that we made it safely. It is such a shame that it's so dangerous because like the gentleman before me said, we all live in the neighborhood with kids and being able to walk to school is such a great asset. I do also feel for the folks on Glen Mary because I can't say that I would want a blinking crosswalk sign in my yard either, but I thought your idea about the crossing guard made a lot of sense because with the crosswalk there as it presently stands, people will continue to use it and it just doesn't feel safe at the present moment. The other thing I want to say is respectfully, I think that Belrose is one of the only other roads that I feel more dangerous walking on with my kids. It's a very blind curve. We walk to Belrose Restaurant all the time, my husband and I. I took my children there the other day and we almost had an accident. So, that is not a road I would ever walk on with a stroller or my children and I certainly wouldn't walk down King of Prussia on a sidewalk with my kids either. It's a lot to corral everyone to get to school safely and it would mean a lot to me as a member of the community and I know many other of my neighbors if there was a safe way to do that. So, thank you very much. I'm glad this is an issue we're discussing.
Thank you. Any further public participation?
I have a question. Do I need to go up there?
You have to, you have to come up to the mic. I'm sorry. There, there are people watching.
With concern for the residents and the neighbors, how about implementing speed bumps?
On a PennDOT, King of Prussia Road?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I can't speak for the department, but roads of that, you know, having 12,000-plus vehicles a day at a certain speed limit, it wouldn't qualify, most likely.
Okay. Thank you.
And I just want to make sure everybody understands, those were all options. I'm not pushing for one option or the other. I'm not saying one is right, is wrong. There are alternatives and, you know, however that moves forward, it moves forward.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, good evening. Chris Marzullo. I live on Hares Lane, so behind, on the other side, behind Radnor Elementary. I'm here on behalf of my daughter, who's with me tonight in the back row, and my son, who's not here, because I fear for their safety. We are some of those folks who don't use the crosswalk to access the school. My children have been through the middle school, they're starting in the high school, but there are plenty of residents on our side of the road who use the crosswalk. So, this isn't just a school problem. Any suggestion that a crossing guard during school hours would solve it, to me, is missing the larger issue. I was going to speak tonight more about the safety of the crosswalk because in my opinion, the crosswalk, as Matt said, is an accident waiting to happen. I fear, as many in the community do, that the proper attention won't be given until we, as a community, experience a tragic accident. And I'm hoping we can find a solution before that happens. I won't belabor the point about the dangerousness of the crosswalk. It seems as though everyone in the room agrees that the crosswalk is dangerous. I'll touch briefly on my opinion on the options that were presented tonight. I think to examine a solution that moves the crosswalk from its existing, sorry, from the existing intersection, whether it's from the church or the neighbor's property, is simply going to leave people who were going to continue to cross there with no protection whatsoever. The fact is, that is the place that the community traverses, King of Prussia Road. It's the only place, you could say that Belrose is feasible. It is, it's a high bar to ask folks to divert half a mile out of their way to get back to Radnor Elementary School. So, I'm just trying to be realistic to say, people are going to continue to cross there. Whether the crosswalk remains in its existing location or moves to the other side of Glen Mary, to me, is in a sense irrelevant. I am very understanding, appreciative, and sensitive to the Collinses and what they've had to say. But a solution, to me, needs to happen at that intersection because that is how the community uses the intersection. They will continue to cross both for the school, for the trail, for the dog park. So, to me, that is where the solution needs to take place. I agree with what Mr. Pierce said. The drivers don't stop because it's difficult to recognize that there's a crosswalk, which is why I have always suggested and been in favor of the signage that is now being proposed, which is driver eye level, user-activated, alerts drivers to the fact that there's a crosswalk there. I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Any further public participation on this question? Again, we're not voting on this tonight. We just wanted to have an open discussion about it. I am the Ward Two Commissioner, so I am your Commissioner. Feel free to reach out to me if you know of others that want to make further comment and we'll be in touch.
Is there, is there a process, though, like a timetable that we're working on here?
Well, there was just so much information involved around this issue that we thought it was good to discuss it openly, but we don't have any timetable that I know of. Mr. Norsini, any, PennDOT have any agenda?
No, ma'am. It's up to the board.
So, there, there are no set next steps. This was just transparency and getting feedback from the community, which is helpful to hear.
Correct. Thank everybody for, for coming out for this. I appreciate it. I'm now going to call for a public participation on any other issue, not the, the two we've just discussed. Seeing none, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Is there any item that Commissioner or the public would like to remove from the consent agenda? No? Seeing none, could I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? So moved. And a second?
Second.
All right. I'm going to call a vote. All in favor of approving the consent agenda?
Aye.
It's unanimous. All right. We'll move on to the business agenda. The first item is appointments to the Board of Health. We have two candidates to join the Board of Health. May I have, I guess I have to do them individually, the two candidates? So, the first individual is Chloe Fong for an unexpired term ending 12/31/25. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Agnew. Thank you. Any discussion about Chloe? Any public discussion? Seeing none, I'm going to call for the approval of Chloe Fong's appointment to the Board of Health. All in favor?
Aye.
It's unanimous with Commissioner Riley off the podium. My second candidate is Lee Auker for an unexpired term ending 12/31/2026. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments or questions about... Any comments or questions about Lee Acker? No? Seeing none from the public? Seeing none, I'll call a vote for the approval of Lee Acker to the Board of Health. All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous with Commissioner Riley off the podium. All right. Item B is Ordinance 2024-06. This is the adoption of a handicap space on Bloomingdale Avenue. Chief Flanagan?
Yes, Commissioners. The applicant has supplied the Radnor Police Highway Patrol Unit with the proper documentation after their initial request at the staff traffic meeting. It was read off the previous Commissioner's meeting, and I am requesting, based on those circumstances, for you to vote upon this request, this ordinance.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-06?
So moved.
So moved by Commissioner Agnew. And a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mulrooney. We've heard what is it about? Any Commissioner comments or questions? Any public participation on this issue? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote to approve Ordinance 2024-06. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Item C is Ordinance 2024-07. This is an introduction. Amending Chapter 263 Trees of the Radnor Code, revising Section 263-4, the Tree Replacement Formula, revising Section 263-5 by removing subsection D as to ash trees, and revising Section 263-8, Review of Permit Applications. Could I have a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-07?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Riley. Thank you. Mr. Foster, I believe this is you.
Actually, Mr. Rice will be taking it, and we also have Seth Reiser from the Shade Tree Commission. They're going to talk about this subject.
Thank you. Mr. Rice?
Just a little bit of background. Shade Tree Commission has been working on this ordinance amendment for some time, I believe. You have a representative here who made a presentation to the board back in July, and what was essentially being proposed is modifying, there's more to the Shade Tree Ordinance than just what we're doing here tonight. So the proposed changes would modify the tree replacement formula, so there would be a two-tier replacement formula. If you're going to clear 50% below, 50% of trees on the lot, there's a certain replacement formula, and if you're clearing 50% and above, there's a larger replacement formula. There was also a need to add a fee in lieu, a specific fee in lieu, for the, and these get paid when trees aren't planted, so it's fees in lieu of planting trees. Residential zoning district, $300 per replacement tree, and commercial zoning district, $500 per replacement tree. So these are fees being paid, which, and the Chair of the Shade Tree Commission can speak to it, how they were arrived at, but they're paid into a fund that is then used to plant trees throughout the township. The other part of this ordinance is just a tweak to the information that people submit with plans, and that is in Article Three of the ordinance, Section 263-8. You have in, I believe that's highlighted in red, and that was changed also to require a table showing the total number of trees on the lot. Total being removed and the total number that are identified as hazardous because they're treated differently. And then a final thing that this ordinance does is remove the provisions relating to ash trees. So there are the three things. I'll let your Chair of the Shade Tree Commission fill out any, or answer any questions, but it's been advertised for, well, tonight is for introduction, then it would be advertised if it moves forward, and it'll come back to the board at your next meeting or probably next month.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Of course.
Yeah. I didn't even have to say it.
Here we go. I have some questions, if you don't mind. So how did you come up with the $300 and the $500? Does that include the cost of the tree and the cost of planting the tree and that sort of thing? And how'd you come up with those numbers?
It does. It does, and thank you, Solicitor Rice, for that overview. So the fee in lieu of amounts have not been in the ordinance previously. We have set a precedent, $250 for residents, and we were doing like $350 for commercial zone properties. And the way in which we came up with the replacement number was industry rates, but also the rates of which we've been planting trees, the Shade Tree Commission, over the past five, six years, and the average cost, knowing that this number will need to be increased over time as, you know, things get more expensive, but...
Let me just interrupt you there.
Sure.
When you say, when you say, "we've been planting," do you mean, because I don't know how you do it.
Sure.
Do you hire an outside landscaping firm to do this?
No. So it's a mix of both, I will say. So the Shade Tree Commission, we've been planting roughly 300 trees per year. We get the trees from PHS. They're roughly 10-to-12-foot tall trees, about two-inch caliper. They are bare root trees, and we have a lot of our local tree service companies volunteer planting at both residents' homes and in parks. And on occasion, when we have capacity issues, whether volunteer capacity, also Public Works helps plant trees, then we'll outsource and hire some labor. But that's all averaged into the costs that you see tonight.
So let me ask you, wouldn't it be better to say what it's going to really cost? I mean, you're kind of, you know, relying on the kindness of strangers, quote Tennessee Williams, so perhaps maybe it would be better to what the real cost would be?
Sure, and we recognize that. However, we use the input of many factors for this, including making the number too high, and let's say if someone plants the tree themselves, which we would allow for from a replacement perspective, let's say it's a resident, you know, we're always cautious of, I'll say monetarily, issues of their project and what they want to do. So it's definitely a balance. When we were doing 100% installation through contractors and purchasing ball and burlap trees, it was roughly $500 per tree for a residential installation, but since we've been sourcing trees in a different capacity, that's the number that we settled at.
And may I ask you, there doesn't seem to be any kind of fine in the ordinance. So for a developer, for example, wouldn't it, well, pay the 300 bucks per tree, I don't care, as opposed to not doing it and doing it the right way?
There are, and Solicitor Rice can clarify, but there are fines if trees are removed without authorization, and there's language around that, which isn't being modified as part of this.
It's not being modified, then? Okay.
Yeah. Currently, Commissioner Agnew, in the, in the ordinance, and we're not addressing that, it's 263-11, fines and penalties, and then there's a disposition of fines and penalties, but that lays out fines that get levied, and if the fines get collected, they also go into the tree fund along with these fees in lieu of. So I don't know how often that's happened, but essentially what the language says now, upon the determination of the township engineer that an applicant or his or her representative has violated any part of the ordinance, the applicant pays a fine of $250 per day or $350 per tree unlawfully removed. So then there's a notice of that.
So wait, that sounds like $350, so it's a day and a half. You said $250 a day or $350 per tree?
Or $350 per tree unlawfully removed, or such other fine as determined to be equitable by the township engineer. So I don't know how often that has happened, but the way it works is a fine's assessed, that is then sent to the offender.
Mm-hmm.
The offender has 10 days to pay the fine, and if it's not paid, then we go to District Justice Court.
So it's not someone's yard and they're taking down their tree that concerns me? It's development, the discommunion, boom, bunch of trees are down and...
Well, this, this would apply to a developer doing that.
Yeah, I'm just saying it doesn't sound prohibitive enough to me. To me, that's my personal. Doesn't sound prohibitive enough, so if you want to think about that, just saying.
So just to add a layer on top of that, you know, one of the concerns that we've heard from residents and just in general is, you know, the clearcutting of large lots for development, and that's the purpose of the formula modification. So if you're clearing a lot, more than 50% of the trees on the lot being cleared, then that's where the replacement formula essentially doubles. In the case where there's not enough room to replant, then that's where, you know, the 300 per residentially zoned tree and 500 per commercially zoned tree, you know, it does start to add up. The fine that Solicitor Rice had mentioned, it's been enacted a few times during my tenure as Chair, but not a lot. Typically, you know, we have everyone in the township understanding of, you know, the approvals that they need to move forward with a project, so just wanted to layer that in. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments from Commissioners? Any public participation on this issue?
Hi, I'm Amber Atwood Levy, Executive Director for Radnor Conservancy, and we are very excited about this proposed amendment and fully support this update. These are realistic tree costs that are represented. We give away hundreds of trees every year, and personally, I am involved with the Tridifferent Township Environmental Advisory Council. I install township trees. I'm familiar with the PHS program, buying deer fencing, working with township, working with volunteers. These are very realistic costs, so the updates are great and spot-on, and addressing clearcutting concerns are what we hear a lot from our members. So introducing this new replacement calculation is very important. It's very current, it's not a new idea. This exists out there in other municipalities. And just wanted to mention with our tree giveaway, when, if community members need support and need access to trees, we give those away every year. They qualify for replacement calculations, so we're happy that we can help with that too if there is that need for support in the community.
Thank you. Any further public participation? So this is an introduction. It'll be back to us for, at a future meeting, but we need to take a vote on whether to introduce this now. So all in favor of the introduction of Ordinance 2024-07? I call a vote.
Ida?
It's unanimous. Thanks. All right. Item D is Resolution 2024-98, Authorization to Award Construction Contract B-23-009C for the Roof Renovation Project at the Radnor Memorial Library to Sky General Construction LLC to include contingency and construction inspection and administration costs in the total amount of $95,000, $47,500 to be funded from the general fund, and $47,500 to be funded from the Keystone Grant for Public Library Facilities. Could I have a motion to approve Resolution 2024-98? Commissioner Agnew, and a second?
Second.
Second, Commissioner Larkin. All right. Mr. Norsini?
Thank you, Madam President. So this is very straightforward. This is the second, the third time we've bid this project, and our department feels that Sky General Construction is the lowest responsible bidder, and we respectfully request the award of this contract to Sky.
Thank you. All right. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Seeing none, any public participation?
Garrett, I have a point of clarification. When was the library rehabbed and what should have been the warranty on this roof? You discussed the extended life of this building the last meeting, and I just wanted to follow up. It doesn't seem like this roof is very old.
Mr. Norsini, can you?
So these are two very different animals, one being a flat membrane roof and this being a standard shingle roof, which will have a 25-year warranty. We will have inspections and we'll make sure that it meets the manufacturer's requirements for that.
So this roof that you're going to put on is not, was not replaced when the library was redone?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further public participation? Seeing none, I'm going to call a vote on Resolution 2024-98. All in favor? Aye. Unanimous. Item E is to authorize the Engineering Department to go to bid for the South Devon Crosswalk funded by the General Reserve Funds. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay. Commissioner Mulrooney and Commissioner Larkin. Commissioner Abel, I believe you're the proponent of this. Give us a little comment. Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate it, being included on the agenda. Very similar to the conversation we just had with respect to Radnor Elementary. We have an intersection in West Wayne, which is on Conestoga Road and South Devon. Conestoga Road being a state road overseen by PennDOT. A little bit of the difference is, you know, we had a similar issue six years ago when we first started looking at this intersection with respect to getting access to the intersections to be able to put the sidewalk in and the beeper system. Thanks to the township, particularly Steve Norsini, we've received permissions from all of the responsible principals, and the one remaining aspect is funding. So my request is that we use the General Reserve Fund, which Bill, you know, I'm going to ask you the total amount at the moment. Nine million?
Ninety-nine. Oh, I wish. No, we're usually in the ballpark of 10 to 12 million in the general fund.
Okay, so...
Yeah, which is, I mean, the policy is 25% of annual expenditures?
Yeah, I said nine million, not 90.
Oh, I heard 99.
No, sorry.
It's like, well, then we don't have a problem, but yeah.
So...
So at nine million, yes, you're very much in the ballpark.
Okay, so, you know, this project likely to be around 200,000, and for the number of neighbors in West Wayne, and let's say in Wayne too, but the number of neighbors using this intersection to cross right now, and it's dangerous, but they're still using it to get to Phillipone Park or to Bo Connor Park where we've done renovations, we've put a new basketball court in, new baseball fields, new tennis courts, pickleball courts, or just to get to Wayne Elementary or to their friends' homes. You know, there is tremendous value, and particularly for the safety of the neighborhoods. I think this is a valid project and would appreciate support from the board.
Thank you. Mr. Norsini, could you give us a few details about this project?
Sure.
Just an overview, we've heard it before, so...
It's on the, it's on the laptop, if you want, but basically, it's the exact same system, excuse me, the RRFPs. There will be two, one on the southwest corner where the apartment is at Conestoga and South Devon, and one across the street. As Commissioner Abel noted, we have all the easements we need to do this project. There will be a crosswalk. There will also be pavement markings as you approach that say, I think it's ped crossing, something of that sort. say, I think it's ped crossing, something of that sort. So it's a same project, different location.
Thank you. Any Commissioner questions or comments? Commissioner Riley?
The daily traffic Conestoga Road ballpark.
13, 15?
No.
Thousand, yes.
Just recording.
99 million, no, I'm...
So Commissioner Abel, you introduced this as similar to the project that we talked about earlier, and I agree, all the safety issues and the location. The one difference is that the other one was in the bond, so it's already been kind of, the money has already been found for this. So as we are, you know, in September, I think in the next month, we're probably looking at our budget season calendar. So I just, my only question is around the timing. Like, would this not be better to have the conversation during our budget season when we're taking a look at, you know, lots of projects, and this one I would imagine would float to the top because of the safety concerns? But that's my only question is why now and why not through the, either if we're going out to a bond or looking at the annual budget, we're so close to the end of the year?
Well, I would have done it six months ago, I would have done it 12 months ago. Yeah, I prefer not to wait, you know, another month or two to start those discussions. And, you know, this board voted on, you know, a handful of new police officers in the middle of the year, taking up to 500,000 from the reserve fund. So I don't think it's, you know, it's not inconsistent with what this board has done in the past. It's 200,000 out of 10 million, and it still keeps us above that threshold. So I think, you know, the neighbors would say, you know, as soon as possible.
Commissioner, Mr. White?
Yeah, just to add a little bit more to that, and I may lean on Steve here a little bit, just talk, the timing of things, we have to rebid this. Unfortunately, with the last set of bids, they were rejected, so we're in a position where it has to be rebid, and that's going to take some time, Steve. I don't know if you can ballpark that for us. And the reason why I'm bringing that up is it's going to align us with those larger discussions anyway. The good news is, is that this is already engineered, so it's not one of these projects where we have to wait six to eight months for an engineering firm to come out and design it. That's already done, so it's just a matter of dusting off the bid documents and putting them back out there on PennBid, which will speed that end up. But we're still some time out from getting back in front of the board with authorization to move forward.
So, Mr. White, I seriously think this would end up being a spring project, so even if we bid it, you know, relatively immediately, still have the proper advertising period, receiving the bids, and our, you know, our ordinance regarding these bids adds considerable time to the bid package. So we would probably be back before the board late this year for award at best, and then once that occurs, traffic signal products do take longer, not like a normal traffic signal, but by the time we go through all the submittals and so forth, I think it would be pushing spring at best before the project started, if it was bid immediately, so it would fit into both categories.
So just to kind of put a period on that, obviously, over the course of the next couple of months, we're going to be having a lot of different discussions about a lot of different things. Hopefully, capital is one of them, because this is, this particular project is one of many. In fact, when we rejected the bids for this crosswalk, there were other crosswalks as part of that discussion. It was brought up earlier tonight about the comp plan and the emphasis on mobility throughout the township, which is going to bring sidewalks and crosswalks to the top of the list on a lot of different areas touching many parts of our township. But if we're able to identify the funding between now and when the bids come back, that'll, that'll speed things up for when the bids do come in, and it sounds like it's going to line up pretty closely with the budget process anyway. But if at the end of the day, we're in a position where there isn't funding for additional capital, understanding what happens with this project would be beneficial, so we're not in the same situation we were when we had to reject the bids last time.
So I'd like to pull on that thread about the rejected bids. Can you remind Commissioners and the public what happened around those?
Sure. I'm going to, I don't have the exact timeline on, it's been, it has been some time, we've been talking about this crosswalk, the one over on Clyde and Sprawl, as well as the one at Radnor Chester and King of Prussia on the other side of the bridge, for multiple years now. Those crosswalks, specifically Clyde and Sprawl, and then Conestoga and South Devon, the one that's on tonight's agenda, were bid together. The board at the time recognized the safety impact. We also recognized at the time that we didn't have the funding, and we were hoping that between the time the decision to go out to bid to award, that funding would be available. That was not the case, which put us in a position where we had to notify the bidders that we did not have the funding and needed to reject, which puts us where we're at now. So it comes down to funding. Period.
Thank you. Commissioner Agnew?
Yeah, Steve, has this been decided that it's safer with this crosswalk than without it? And my point is, if it's not there, then people don't, won't cross, or not as many?
So, talking to one of my colleagues, it is used relatively heavily, and I won't say...
People just cross themselves? I mean, they just go?
Right, they cross. So if it's going to be used, then there should be proper equipment to do so. The rectangular rapid flashing beacon is the best technology we have today for that process.
And we would, I hope, when people first come onto Conestoga off of Lancaster, or are coming around, I don't know what direction that is traveling, is that traveling north?
So there'll be pavement markings as you come off of Lan...
I'm sorry, say it again, sorry.
There'll be pavement markings as you, aside from signs, there'll be pavement markings as you come off of Lancaster to head east on Conestoga that say, you know, they're eight-foot letters, and it says, you know, "Ped Crossing," there's signs, and then the actual rapid, rectangular rapid flashing beacon.
So the, a driver would have advanced notice, not just what they can see?
Correct, and that's in both directions. That's in both directions.
Okay. And what was that 98% thing in the other presentation? 98, this is 98% something?
Reduces accidents.
By 98%?
98%. Collisions was the exact term, sorry.
Collisions. So only two every hundred people get killed? Is that, I mean, that's what it sounds like, I don't think that's what you mean.
I didn't interpret what the FHWA said, I just put that out there.
Just saying.
They said collisions, that could be collisions between cars, I don't know.
Okay. Are you done? Can I, okay. Mr. Norsini, would this crosswalk project implicate a resident's home and require an easement and put a chirping flashing light on somebody else's property?
It would. We do have those easements though, so they've been obtained, because this was bid last year. But we do have the easements in hand from the apartment building and the properties across the street.
And those easements are current, you don't have to go back, the same way you have to go out to bid, you don't have to go back for an easement?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Any further Commissioner questions or comments? Any public participation on this question? Seeing none, I would like to call a vote on the authorization for the Engineering Department to put out this crosswalk for bid. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous. All right. Next item is Resolution 2024-101, Authorization of the Award of the Contract of the Acoustical Evaluation Services for the Willow's Park Preserve to Gannett Fleming Incorporated in the amount of $52,000 to be funded from the general fund allocated to the requirements of the lease agreement. May I have a motion to pass Resolution 2024-101?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Commissioner Abel. All right. Mr. Norsini?
Madam President, I think I'll tee this up, and then I'll hand the detailed part off to the other engineer.
Mr. What?
The non-acoustic engineer. So just, just a little bit of history, I think a lot of the, or most of the Commissioners are aware of how we've gotten to this point, but in case you're not, or if the public's not aware, going back to when the Willow's Park Preserve started having outdoor events at their facility, there has been, you know, the lease we have with the Willow's Park Preserve allows up to 25 major events per year. The good news is, the Willow's Park Preserve has been very successful in booking those events, and most of those consist of weddings, which consists of music and DJs. And what we've, what we've experienced, and I'm using "we" as the neighbors over at Inverary, is that the noise coming off of the Willow's property associated with those events has been difficult to nail down and to mitigate. I do want to give the Willow's Park Preserve credit. We have met both with their leadership, as well as the Homeowners Association and leadership in the Inverary neighborhood. The Willow's Park Preserve has made multiple decisions and improvements to try to help mitigate this problem over time, more than I can go into detail now, but shifting the direction of the tent, buying a sound system, hiring a, I always get the names wrong, but hiring someone on scene to help manage the sound while the sound is going on, to, over time, determining who the better DJs are versus the ones that are no longer invited back anymore because they were problem, they created a problem for everybody. So it is, it is very front of mind for Willow's Park Preserve, they have, they have taken strides. It's, improvements have been made, we have decibel readings that tell us that improvements have been made, but we're, the folks at Inverary, just, it's just not where they would like to be, which gets us to this next point, which where we're at today is to move the engineering of the problem up a level, to get an acoustic engineer in to take a look at the entire spectrum of causes, and hopefully at the end of it, come up with maybe an idea or two to help further remedy the situation. So that being the case, and given the fact that the Willow's is our facility and the township as partners in this, I thought it would be our position to bring this in front of the board. We incur this cost to help try to move, move this issue, this issue closer to some sort of resolution. We have the allocation set aside from the initial 1.6 or 1.8 million that was set aside years ago, that that's where this money would come from. So that's why it's in front of you tonight. We're hoping that if the board agrees, we can get this, this engagement going. And then, Steve, if you wouldn't mind just giving a little bit more context on what an acoustic engineer is going to provide for us in this situation?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. White. So there's a few things. This is a, it's not an inexpensive contract, and I will tell you, part of that is my fault. I'll be perfectly transparent, because I've tried to add, in listening to the residents of Inverary, I've tried to make sure that we're making this a comprehensive look. So, for instance, most sound studies stop at the property line, because most ordinances reference the property line. But we know, in speaking to some of the residents, that has been a concern. So there's actually, I required them to put two of these devices on Inverary properties, right, where we know there's some concerns. One or the other is the octave reading, which we discussed briefly via email. So we had heard that the bass carries further, so we want to investigate that. And I'm just going to take it, if it so pleases the board, just step through this. It's a little hard to read the way they worded it, so I've kind of boiled it down, at least I found it that way. So there's going to be five devices put out, and there's one by the pond, two by the street, and two on Inverary property. And as they note in their proposal, first trip, so from October 9th to October 14th, the devices are set and they're getting baseline levels without the weddings. October 11th and October 12th, there's two weddings, the devices are back on, they're measuring those sounds. I also required them, I wanted a person from their engineering firm to be at the wedding to take other sound readings while the wedding was going on, observing what was going on, what the band is. Second trip, October 16th to October 21st, baseline sound levels are taken, no weddings. October 18th and October 19th, two more weddings, the devices are on, they're taking all their readings. Again, again, a Fleming employee will be at those weddings physically, getting additional readings. Third trip, as they call it, October 23rd through the 28th, establish the baseline readings, that's ambient sound. So ambient sound is everything, cars, planes, lawn mowers, whatever's going on in the area, that's the baseline. October 25th and October 26th is where they measure the sound levels during the wedding receptions. Again, again, a Fleming employee will be on site during both of those weddings. As I noted, the sound level measuring includes the whole octave band, that's so we can capture the bass and other levels that we've heard of. The devices are calibrated before and after each use. They'll stand at five-foot height, which is pretty standard. If you look at noise ordinances, the readings are always at five foot. So the sound level assessment report will be prepared. It's going to talk about what they call the ordinance, which was a contract from another venue we gave them, just to give them some context, because originally, the residents gave us that contract and said, here's something to follow. We know that necessarily hasn't been the solution, but we wanted them to see that. You're going to get noise metrics, you're going to get all the ambient sound levels at the meter locations, their methodology and their measurement setup. And you might have noticed a couple terms in there, fast time weighting, A frequency. A frequency is just bringing this to decibels. So our ears here, a human ear, 1,000 to 5,000 hertz, this is sensitive to that, and a weighting adjustment is applied so that the measurements are in decibels and appropriate. They talked about fast time weighting, this is also important. Refers to the maximum sound level over a specific period of time, so it represents the highest noise level reached during this timeframe. It's used to assess peak noise events or intense but short-bursted, short-lived sounds. So we're trying to make this as comprehensive as possible. When this is all said and done, we require them to come up with solutions. Now, in the report, the author noted three noise mitigation measures that range from noise barrier mitigation, speaker intent placement, and sound level absorptive occurrences. We don't know if those are it, he's just putting that out there, but we are asking for solutions. So we will get a report with pretty charts and graphs, a lot of data, and in the end, recommendations that could possibly work to reduce the sound, though. That's really what this is all about.
Thank you.
May I?
Go ahead.
Mr. Norsini, how many man-hours are involved in doing this project?
That I don't have, Commissioner.
Well, it seems that they went to the weddings and that sort of thing, it's probably like 42. Is there six weddings?
I wouldn't, so even though this is acoustic engineering, and it is a universe I do not live in, I do know for engineering firms, time in the field or data collection in the field, there's an additional amount of time that can be considerably greater in their office. So I wouldn't even hazard a guess at how many hours are being spent.
So if we doubled it, it would be 100 hours?
But I, I'm not, I'm not going to guess on that, Commissioner, I really won't. I don't know what it will be.
What's a reasonable hourly rate?
For an acoustic engineer, it's going to be considerable, because they are...
Well, that's, that's a qualitative term. What's a, what's a reasonable...
I don't have that rate, Commissioner.
Okay, so we need to know that, right, before we can award this?
If that's what the board wishes.
Seems like a lot of money to me.
It is.
And by the way, I have a decibel reader on right now, and I am speaking at, well, it depends, somewhere between 56 and 85. I don't think it's blowing anybody's ears off. off.
I, I just wanted to share, I guess, with the board in general. I, I had a similar experience with another township where there was a collection of neighbors who had an issue with a local ice hockey rink, and they were really unhappy with the noise. And we brought in an engine, engineering firm. It was not Gannett Fleming, and they did a decibel reading study for us. And the experience was that most of the residents didn't believe that the numbers were in fact what the engineers came back with, because the numbers were well below the, they had a, they had a noise ordinance that had a cutoff, I want to say at 65A weighted decibels, if I'm remembering the right term. So some of them didn't believe that, others insisted that the engineers had measured at the wrong time, and as a result, the township ended up agreeing, we're going to send the engineers back out, we're going to measure at a different time. And it was still beneath the 65A weighted decibels. And as a result, those residents insisted that, well, you were measuring in the wrong place because the sound bounces off the walls differently, and like, all the sound focuses magically into my living room and bedroom for whatever reason. In my mind, the issue that we have is there are residents who are unhappy with the volume of the noise. Irrespective of what number of decibels there are, there are citizens who are unhappy with the volume of the noise. We have to make a choice whether we're going to say, this is what happens when you get to live in a community that has an awesome venue, and there's a lot of people who get to come and enjoy it. And unfortunately, that's going to cause some externalities that you're going to suffer for, and we wish that weren't the case, but we're going to make you live with it. Or we need to say, we're going to prioritize the residents who have been there for a long time, who predate the noise at this location, and we're going to say that the Willow's just isn't going to be permitted to do the things that it's doing right now. And we can do that by crafting a noise ordinance, which maybe has some exceptions that we could hand out permits on a more limited basis, and you strike a compromise in that way. But to me, I think that we're going to be chasing moving goalposts by sending somebody out to create the report. No one's going to end up being happy with it. The residents aren't going to read it and say, oh, you're right, the decibels are far lower than I anticipated. I guess I'm not actually unhappy. And the flip side of the coin is, I don't know that we're going to get a lot of great data that's going to enable the Willow's to really do anything without very complicated changes to their sound setup. We're going to be having to put up sound baffles all over the place and large vegetative barriers. So anyway, given my, my prior very poor experience with this, I would say that I am a no.
Thank you. Any other, Commissioner, question?
Well, just to, um, tack on to, to Bill's comments, and just to go through the timeline, my recollection of, of this, this, the establishment of the WPP and allowing them into the Willow's was that we, we did allow, and we approved for use of 20, up to 25 venues, so they would continue as they had previously done prior to the Willow's shutting down. But at the time, all of those events were held inside. So the weddings were inside, the music was inside. It was this board that allowed the tent, and it was during COVID. And, and we approved the tent, and we have, and we've allowed the tent to continue. So it's, it's an unintended consequence that this board has caused, that, that, that there's now, you know, the, the noise that is impacting the quality of life for the neighbors. And, and it's in, it's in Inverary. It, it may be in Roundhill. I, I haven't heard from any neighbors in Roundhill, but, you know, that would be interesting to know as well. So if, if, if this is approved, I, I think we should take a sense of, of the neighbors in Roundhill and see if they're also being impacted by the noise. But, you know, I think, I think this board has a responsibility to look at a resolution, to look, to look to resolve the, the situation, because we've created the issue for the neighbors. You know, the, the tent was never there. We've allowed the tent. So, you know, I, if, if the town, if the township is saying this is a good step to hopefully finding a, to solve the problem, I think it's a step worth taking.
I, I just want to clarify. I think the neighbors, personally, I would want to do something to really help them. I just don't need, think that we need to spend $52,000 at Gannett, at Gannett Fleming for something that we know, we know is a problem. And we'd be better spent, the money would be better spent asking them for what, what are your examples of a solution. Or, you know, go to a music department at Eastern University, which was what I did, for an event. And they told me the different things to do, and it all worked. So it's a lot cheaper resolutions than that kind of money over at Gannett Fleming.
I'm not sure that there's anyone in this room who has the answer to this, but I know, and Bill, you, you began to list sort of the efforts that the Willow's has already put into place. I'd be very curious what this nonprofit has done, you know, how much they're, how much outlay they've already done to address this issue. It's my understanding that it is much, much better. It may not, you're not going to have silence coming out of a public park with a, you know, a, a community event space in it. But I do think that there have been improvements. Any chance there's a number, Bill, that you all know from the Willow's Park Preserve about what they've already invested?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have the, any numbers, just the, the list of things that were done. We, we'd have to ask the Willow's Park Preserve for that.
Okay. And then, but to your knowledge, some of those were, you know, they would have been a costly change. I mean, I think there was moving things, there have been barrier, you know, I don't know all the detail of it, but it wasn't sort of homegrown, you know, let's just, you know, stick the bass player in the back, right? They have had professional advice on how to make improvements, is my understanding.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, it's, it's been an investment, both in time and money. I, I don't have the amount, but I, I know that for sure.
Yeah. So, and that's one of my biggest concerns, is that this is a nonprofit that we have asked, and they have partnered with the township to take on the, you know, renovation of this beautiful house. You know, the township has committed to over a million dollars to help them with the house. And this is a significant amount of that money that the township has committed. And I think it's on top of already fundraising dollars that they are already putting towards this issue. So I think the price tag is really high. I, I appreciate that there is a, a problem, and I, and I would hope that neighbors and the Willow's and the township will continue to have these conversations and figure out better ways to do things. You know, continuous improvement is obviously essential here, but I just, I know that there's already been a lot of efforts, and I just, I think this is a lot of money. And I'd be more interested in, in perhaps putting our efforts into, I think it was Commissioner Larkin mentioned, you know, putting it into our noise, noise ordinance. So we're not, you know, solely dealing with noise coming from one property within the township, but it would be a benefit to the entire community who faces noise issues, whether they're folks who live near Villanova Stadium, or, you know, I mean, there's a lot of places in our community that makes noise during events. And, you know, we've bought our homes here in a suburban, you know, density of a suburban neighborhood. So I'll, obviously, always want to solve a problem, but I just, I'm not sure that this will. And it's a lot of money to just try. So, that's my thought.
Commissioner Riley, were you about to?
Yeah, I agree with, 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 most of things said. All the things were said. Have we ever got a complaint from, say, neighbors in that area on Sundays? They have skeet shooting at a local country club? No.
Not that I'm aware of. They haven't come up in any of our conversations we've had with either of the two parties.
Okay. Thank you. I am interested-
Madam President, if I, just, just real quickly, I, I want to touch on the fact that, I mean, it is a lot of money. And we, we are not insensitive to that. And it was not, the proposal wasn't, hey, spend a bunch of money and hopefully we get something out of it. It was, we were looking for the most scientific proposal possible that stood on absolute data and fact from an expert to then provide us with some recommendations on moving forward. So I, I'm not insensitive, oh, and coupled with the fact that we have the money dedicated to this partnership already set aside to pay for it, that, the combination of those elements is why we brought it to the board tonight. And, I mean, ultimately, you know, no matter what, we're going to continue the conversation to try to work on solutions. But I just, based on some of the things I just heard, I, I, it wasn't as, as kind of aloof as it was suggested it was.
You know, and, and, my understanding is that we're in this position because the neighbors in Inverary and the members of the WPP have taken efforts. They've worked together. They've attempted multiple solutions. Unfortunately, those solutions haven't worked. So that's how we ended up at, at this step. And my fear is, you know, if, if we don't continue to, to look at options, we're going to end up as, as happened with Appleford, where the, the neighbors in the vicinity of Appleford ended up suing the, the establishment. For, for noise.
What happened?
You know, I don't know the, I don't know the outcome. But, but Appleford now has significant restrictions. So I, I, I don't know for a fact, but I would sense that-
Or you just know it's true.
Well, yeah. I mean, I, I can, I can put the article from, from Main Line Times in, in the record if I need to.
Thank you. I'm interested, if there's no further Commissioner comment, in hearing some public comment. Is there anyone here who would wish to speak?
Hi, my name is Bill Casey. I live in Inverary, along with Susan Fahy, and we have a couple of, of other residents here in support of this resolution. We are, I'm part of the homeowners association board, and we have worked very closely with WPP. They've been a great partner in this effort. However, there has not been any mitigation of the noise. I've actually witnessed it on multiple occasions, and I'm here to say that we really need to figure something out for the residents of Inverary. And it's not just one resident. We have 65 homes. There are probably five or six that are really impacted by this. We all hear it, but the five or six homes that are severely impacted by it, we need a resolution. And I think this, this opportunity to bring in the engineering firm is a great step in the right direction. I'm going to let Susan talk a little bit. She is one of the residents that is severely impacted by the, by the noise at the Willow's, so, please.
Thank you, Bill. Yeah, my name is Susan Fahy. Jim Riley, I, my mother was your neighbor. Nice to see you. I, I, my husband and I bought in Inverary in 2020, and I will tell you, this is the first time I've been before the township commissioners, so I'm a little nervous. I'm just getting that out there. I've done public speaking my whole life, but this is pretty intimidating. So let me, give me, give me some time. When we moved in, in 2020, Darby Paoli Road was closed, COVID was going on. It was a whole different world than it is now. I also grew up on Meadowwood Road, right next to this young man, and I had my 18th birthday party at the Willow's. In talking to many people through the years, the Willow's events were always inside, in the solarium. And don't know what the noise was in Inverary, but the, the events were inside. The Willow's now has the tent. It's my understanding, I don't know for a fact, but it's my understanding that the tent was put up because of COVID, and the tent was also put up because the mansion at the time didn't have their CO. The CO came later, after they put the sprinkler systems in, and I believe the roof was approved. So the tent was originally, I think, intended to be kind of a stopgap measure. And of course, it was a good stopgap measure, but call it COVID scope creep, call it what you will, the tent stayed outside. And the tent stayed there, and the event stayed in the tent. Most weddings and events were always inside. The tent provides a beautiful vista. I get that. One of the things you folks need to know, as Bill mentioned, and as Mr. White mentioned, we have started, this journey started two years ago, October. So we have been talking to the Willow's Park Preserve as part of the HOA, as well as neighbors. We have been talking to the township. Our efforts started with a meet and greet to get to know the Willow's Park Preserve Board, so they could see us as people, and we would get to know them and see them as people. We also took the initiative to contact, I personally took the initiative to contact Appleford to benchmark with them. We set up and arranged for the township, and township if they wanted to come, and also the board to go to Appleford for benchmarking. That benchmarking provided them with a whole different set of tools, such as the contracts that the Appleford people provided for us, discussion of noise monitoring, discussion of event management. It, it went anywhere from monitoring the noise at the parking levels at Appleford, to restrictions they put on DJs, to restrictions they put on Indian ceremonies with elephants on the driveway. And all of those were done because of the neighbors. And Appleford and the neighbors do appear to be getting along now. I don't know the history 10 years ago or 15 years ago when that started, but I do know it, it, it seems to be getting along now, but it is very, very strict management. Also, as part of the resource was the discussion of owning the sound system. And Appleford does own the sound system that the bands are required to use. They have a whole different contracting process. It was our suggestion and our discussion with the township and with the board that they revisit the contracts that the township had, excuse me, the park preserve had, and that the Peachtree Caterer had. So there's contracts involved and contract changes. The reality is, is that many of the efforts that have been taken, which we tremendously appreciate, came from this benchmarking from Appleford, and came from some of our neighbors that do have some experience with bands and with acoustics. We asked them to please move the, the speakers, which were faced right to our neighborhood. They did move the speakers. We asked that they talk about, and we is the whole group of township, the board, and the neighborhood. We talked about decibel meeting, decibel meter readings. We talked about putting drapes down on the side. We talked about going inside and, and getting back to going inside. So all of this discussion has been close to 24 months. We have really, really worked hard to be cooperative and collaborative. We've really worked hard to try and brainstorm and come up with something. There was a comment made earlier about the neighbors and just a few neighbors, and maybe these neighbors unfortunately just have to put up with it. The reality is, is that there's a compromise here. And I, as one of the most effective neighbors, I fully believe there's a compromise. Am I ever going to have a Willow's event and hear no noise? The answer's no. But the, the flip side of that is, the best compromise, if you talk to any professor, is one where everybody leaves the table a little bit unhappy. Right now, I'm leaving the table very unhappy. And there are no real consequences for the Willow's Park Preserve events. They're still having their events. They're working hard, and they're trying to make sure that they hear us, and we appreciate that. But this particular contract, as Bill said, was to try and get to the point where we have more data than we had before, we have neighborhood impact, we have the Willow's Park Preserve with information, and we have some, perhaps some sound mitigation efforts. But we, we can't get to mitigation efforts because two years' worth of work hasn't found anything. There really isn't anything. There was a comment made that there was significant improvement. I will tell you, there is not significant improvement. And I certainly invite you to come to my patio, or I'll invite you to my neighbor's patio. We are on Lindsay Circle, the topography of the land. Thank you. Come to my patio. Please listen to my real-world experience. And please don't shut this down. Please allow us to, out of the budget that is allocated for Willow's Park Preserve, to use this money to try and get to a solution. I appreciate your time.
Thank you very much. Further public participation?
Good evening. My name is Jack Kelly. I live at 406 Inverary. I have been there for 12 years. I'm kind of at the beginning, much lower than, than the Lindsay Circle people and, and other people that are there. So, and I'm also on the council, and I'm on this noise committee. Lucky me. So, and from our patio, we can hear the noise. It's not that loud. But I went over there at one event and the music, this was the event where they were out, actually, they were out on the patio playing. It was the one around the July 4th. It was, I forget which one it was, but it was a town event. And the music was, you know, kind of loud there. But when I went over to the other side and up on the top of the hill at Lindsay Circle, because of the topography, it's a lot louder there than it is at the bottom of the road, right below where the music is. It's just the nature of the thing. And by the way, we do all want, you know, Willow's Park Preserve to be successful. During COVID, I walked through there almost every day. I mean, I walked on Darby Paoli Road, it was closed. You know, I walked through there and I'd never really done that before. So, you know, we're in support of that. And they have been helpful in trying to do things. And they have spent money. The caterer has been involved trying to do that too. I have some experience on a nonprofit board with a mansion in the city that does those events. And it's a tough business if you're in that catering business. And they have tried to sell future events to bring them inside. That's hard to do when you have a vista like that. That said, I think that, you know, the efforts are being made by all the parties, but, and it is tough to sell the indoor events. I think that when we met with the township here, you were trying to get, Mr. Nercini and Mr. Capella told us, it was hard to find somebody that could do that. So when there's only one bid you can get, that can explain why, you know, why it can be expensive. I'm concerned exactly with what we'll get out of it, but we might as well try to find, if there are mitigation efforts because, to fix that. I can't, I don't know what they could be, but if you can work on that, I think it's worth trying. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Eleanor Ball. I live on Lindsay Circle in Inverary. And I just want to second what Susan was saying about the lived experience. And obviously, we're all here in support of this resolution and the idea of getting experts to give the real hard data that will then hopefully lead to mitigation and a final solution. It's been a long time of trying to gather as much information as we can, try to work collaboratively with WPP, with the township. Many of the ideas that WPP has instituted came from neighbors. So we've been at this for a while. And I guess what I really want you all to understand is what the lived experience really is. And there is some truth to that idea that decibel meters used sort of willy nilly without experts, you know, are not going to give any hint of the real lived experience. But I can sit at my kitchen counter and hear the father of the bride. So any of, you know, any public folks who are watching this, if you're going to have a wedding there, we can hear everything that you say. And we can sing along to the music. And it's to do with the topography, that's a super important point. And it's to do with how the houses are situated in our neighborhood, the way they're designed and the way they're placed on the properties. They're designed for privacy, but as a result, each home looks at another home's blank wall. And that blank wall is what the sound echoes off of. So it's a very unique situation. And I think, you know, it would be very easy to say as a listener, oh, so you've got some noise in your backyard and you don't like it, like, you know, deal with it. But it's quite unique. And I think that it may be the reason too, that Roundhill residents aren't necessarily saying anything about it. I don't know, you know, how things are, you know, how the sound would change if the neighborhood was, you know, designed differently. But for us, it's a reality. And it's something that I think everyone has very cooperatively and quietly and not so quietly at times been working to solve. And we're just up against a wall. And I also really appreciate this idea that, you know, the approval has occurred, you know, the township has approved, that this nonprofit exists and have these events. And they do so under present circumstances with this tent that never existed before. And so that changed everything. And that, you know, if having the events and the music inside is problematic, then we've got an issue and we have to figure it out. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments?
Good evening and thank you for the opportunity to stand before you. And I agree with the Inverary folks. This has been a dilemma and it's primarily because of the topography layout where we are establishing the bands and DJs and where they live is on the same plane. And it's just a big valley beneath it. The Willow's has been working with the Inverary group. It is a very collaborative team that we're working through. Again, the issue is, and it's not so much the base, we have a sound engineer who's come in and put a speaker system in that pretty much reduces bass to next to nothing. And it also squashes some of the real high sounds. The biggest problem is when we have large bands. And if they come in with drums and horns, that sort of thing, there's no way that we can subdue that sound. That just is what it is. I think the only real solution is to try and find some sort of barriers that we can construct within the quote unquote tent. I know we did go over to Appleford with Susan and the structure they have around their tent is actually a Plexiglas structure. It's not the flaps like we have. You know, that's going to cost a lot of money. The Appleford structure is pretty much a permanent thing. The one we have, we put up in the spring, take down in the fall. So I just want you all to know that, you know, number one, these weddings are important to us because they are a major funding source for us to make the improvements to the mansion. And so, you know, we understand what their complaints are. We understand what our mission is and we're trying to find a happy medium in the middle. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's effort to try to come to a solution. As a scientist, I'm a firm believer in data. I know nothing about decibels and sound and how reliable it is, but I'm with Commissioner Abel on this one, that I think having more information could be helpful. I know it's a huge price tag. Hopefully, we'll squeeze every little bit of information out of it that we can. Any other comments, questions, anybody else? All right, let's call a vote. Those in favor of Resolution 2024-101? All in favor? It's just the two of us. All right. Next item is reports of board liaisons. I'm going to go first. The Board of Health will meet next Monday for the first time since the summer break and voting on new leadership in that we had our president-elect resign. So next Monday. Anybody else? Hearing nothing? Okay. Any new business? Old business? Final public participation? Seeing none, could I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Vote? All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.